Good evening, and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Committee Meeting of December 12th, 2023. Madam President?
Councilmember Ball?
Present.
Councilmember Schuler?
Here.
Councilmember Montoya?
Present.
Councilmember Grant?
Here.
Councilmember Nash?
Here.
Councilmember Foreman? Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Mayor Heickler?
I am here. Would you all join me in pledging allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is approval of minutes. Approval of the City Council Special Session Minutes of May 10th, 2022, June 28th, 2022, August 15th, 2023, City Council Study Session Minutes of August 16th, 2022, City Council Conference Minutes of November 22nd, 2022, and City Council Norman Utilities Authority and Norman Municipal Authority Minutes of April 25th and September 26th, 2023. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the minutes passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number two, a resolution of the council in conjunction with the Norman Animal Welfare Oversight Committee, awarding the 2023 Norman Animal Welfare Volunteerism Award. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast. You may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the resolution passes unanimously.
I recognize Jeannie Snyder. There's this in the proclamations.
I'm Jeannie Snyder. I'm the staff liaison for the Animal Welfare Oversight Committee, and I'm happy to be here tonight with some of our staff and for this Volunteer of the Year Award. They're going to come up, and I'm not going to do the announcing. They will. Dr. Amy Tyler, our veterinarian, is here tonight with us. She's the one who nominated our recipient, Cindy. Kelly Robertson is here. She's the shelter manager. And Mark Howery will be doing the presentation. He's one of the co-chairments of the committee. The most important person here, not a person, the most important person, I guess, thing here tonight is Paisley. And this is one of our shelter animals. She's been in foster with Kelly. She's eight weeks old and already has parents, so she's already spoken for, so nobody can have her.
There's more.
There's more. They have more. That is true. The shelter is over capacity. I was out there last night with our youth council, and there's a lot of cute little dogs out there. If you're looking for like an all-white, larger dog, there's three of them out there. They're very cute, and there's some puppies that'll be up for adoption soon, too. So I'm going to have Mark and Kelly and Dr. Tyler and then Cindy, if you'll come on up, and Kelly can bring Paisley. Paisley is only eight weeks old, and it already sits and does things, and one of them is like two and does none of that.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity, mayor and city council members, to, we wanted to, well, I'm here representing the Animal Welfare Oversight Committee as one of the co-chairs, and we have been doing this volunteerism award now for, I believe, six years. So you're the sixth-year recipient, and Cindy Weiner is our recipient for this year. She has been an outstanding volunteer down at the shelter for the last two years. She started coming down there, it was last, it was early in 2022, with her granddaughter, helping to wash dishes and just do all kinds of things that they needed. And Amy, our veterinarian, recruited her to help work in the vet clinic, and so now she's been helping with cleanup and prep work, but most importantly, she sits with the dogs when they come out of their spay-neuter surgery anesthesia. Any of you that have had a dog or a cat that's gone through anesthesia, you know that's kind of a slow process, and anything can happen, and so she patiently sits with dogs. You've done close to, maybe just a little over 500 dogs now. So you're about as experienced as anybody is, and that's probably the most important thing, that she is very noteworthy. Also, she delivers meals, and I mean pet meals, through St. Francis, which is an animal welfare volunteer organization here in Norman. She delivers pet food, both dog and cat food, to elderly people and people, or needy people that aren't able to get out and get these things themselves. So we are very much indebted to you, Cindy, and I want to present this, and actually, Amy and Kelly, if you have anything that you'd like to add, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if I forgot something, Amy, you work with her so much day in and day out.
I would have to say, as far as the deliveries go to low-income families, she's done over 300 deliveries, and it's over 7,000 pounds of food just herself, so it's pretty incredible. On top of waking up 500 dogs, well, more than 500 from anesthesia, it's, she's, she, we could not have a better recipient.
Thank you. Opportunity, if you'd like.
I really just have a few people that I'd like to thank. Well, a lot of people, the officers at the shelter, the staff, Dr. Tyler and Kelsey, for letting me be a part of these animals' lives when they're at the lowest point in their life, and I'm able to comfort them and help them. And most of all, to my granddaughter for sticking it out with me for two years. Thank you very much. Yeah, if you guys will go back.
All right, item three, a resolution of the council, awarding the 2023 City of Norman Human Rights Award in conjunction with the Norman Human Rights Commission. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast. The resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Jackie Farley? There you are. If you'd like to come forward, please.
Thank you so much. Good to see you all. Oh. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Jackie Farley. I am the chair of the Norman Human Rights Commission. Each year, we give out this award to deserving individuals and/or groups who have made such an impact on Norman that we feel they're deserving of being recognized. I've done this a few times now, and having seen the nominations this year, I was amazingly impressed by the type of people who work so diligently in our community to make sure that people's human rights are met, and that every time we can, and every time they can, we see them do what I would say is the right thing. So the Human Rights Commission this year had two nominations that we felt were both deserving of the Human Rights Award, and so the commission voted to choose two winners this year of the Human Rights Award, and we did that because we are trying to make sure that we can recognize both groups and organizations as well as individuals. And in doing that, we feel like that that will let the community know how many people and how many groups do such amazing work. And so for the first time, we're going to hand out two separate awards this year, one for as an individual and one as for a group. So our first winner of the Human Rights Award this year is the Honorable Michael Tupper. Judge Tupper, I'm going to read to you a little bit about what he, the nomination says about him, and having talked to people who know him, I can only say, wow, we need other people like this. He is, Judge Tupper is the presiding judge for the Cleveland County Adult Treatment Court. He also presides over graduation ceremonies for the program. At the most recent graduation held in May of this year, the five graduates totaled 1,800 days of sobriety, avoided 42 years of prison, and saved taxpayers $748,000. Since the Cleveland County Adult Treatment Court's inception in 2000, the court's graduated 1,000 clients. Judge Tupper coordinates services with the Virtue Center, the Community Mental Health Center, defense attorneys, prosecutors, and probation and law enforcement officers to provide individuals, individualized evidence-based treatment plans for the clients in the Adult Treatment Court. Every Saturday, Judge Tupper takes wellness jogging, takes clients, I'm going to start again. Every Saturday, he takes wellness court clients jogging around Andrews Park. Okay. Their participation affords them points toward their advancement through the treatment program. This experience is not a requirement, but an opportunity for participants to be held accountable for their choices and to participate fully in their own recovery. The Honorable Judge Tupper knows that Cleveland County Adult Treatment Court is not an easy program for the participants. He offered these words of inspiration to the runners. He said, "This is a hard program. There's no guaranteed cure. You just have to work at it. Many events, such as this, are run on roads, but this race is not. Rather, this course follows grassy, hilly trails for a reason. Recovery from addiction is very much like the course we are about to follow, ups and downs, with possibly, the possibility of losing one's footing along the way. We might stumble, but the challenge is to overcome such obstacles and finish the race." Those are words of inspiration for all of us. I can understand why this program has been so successful, and we should all be honored that Judge Tupper is our individual winner for the Human Rights Award for 2023.
Wow. Thank you very much for that. Mayor, council members, thank you as well for this opportunity. I wasn't expecting this. Thank you to the Human Rights Commission for the, for the work that you do in our community. This community means everything to me. My wife and I have been here for 25 years now. We're raising our three children here, and, and I've been at that courthouse down the street for 21 years now, and yeah, most people know me for my work with the Treatment Court. It's the most rewarding work that I do and the most proactive work that I do, so, but I hear a lot of different types of cases, and regardless of what type of case I'm hearing, I try very much to, to humanize these cases. These are more than just case numbers. These are human beings who are before me because they're struggling in some manner, and so regardless of what kind of case I hear, I want to, I try very much to do three things. I want to make them feel, I want them to know that I care about them and their, their issues. Second, I want them to know that they've been heard and that I've listened to them. And third, I want them to know that they've been treated with dignity and respect and equality. So if I can do those three things, then I think I've done my job. This is a huge, you know, a sacred duty that the, that the citizens have given me, and it's not one that I take lightly. So to be recognized with this is a, is a truly, is a true honor, and I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Jackie, let me run it through the gamut again. Let me run it through again. Item number four, resolutions of the council, awarding the 2023 Group City of Norman Human Rights Award in conjunction with the Norman Human Rights Commission. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast. The motion to adopt the resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Jackie?
Thank you. It's also an honor to award the Group Human Rights Commission Award to the Red Dirt Collective. Now, I want to know, how many of you know about this group? I hope you, I hope a lot of you do, and I hope a lot of you do. Yes. This group has done amazing work in its own right. Like Judge Tupper, we see individuals putting forth an effort that many of us don't take time to do. Let me read you a little bit about the nomination for the Red Dirt Collective. In just four years, which includes the entirety of the coronavirus pandemic, they have shown their commitment to encouraging fair treatment and mutual understanding among all Norman residents and especially those living in poverty and near poverty in our community. By focusing on people who live in a part of Norman with some of the highest rates of hunger, housing insecurity, unemployment, and poor health outcomes, they help all of us better understand some of the unique issues and challenges and causes specific to the poverty that exists in Norman. More importantly, they are organizing and partnering directly with the women, men, and children who live every day with these challenges and whose lives and futures depend on addressing them. It was remarkable to watch, the nominee, nominee said, primarily on social media, this small, all-volunteer grassroots organization of Norman residents build a network of outdoor food pantries throughout the central and east parts of Norman. They, they address the struggle to provide for basic needs of the families during the pandemic. To witness the compassion and respect shown to the hundreds of participants and who altered the mutual aid fairs put on by Red Dirt Collective have been inspiring. Their community garden not only helps provide healthy and nourishing produce, but also the opportunity for recipients to work side by side with those organizers, making their garden possible. Red Dirt Collective is helping educate all of us in Norman, who want to see change in the parts of Norman most damaged by out-of-state investors and landlords. The members of the Red Dirt Collective have not only been open to the input of Norman's churches and nonprofits and agencies who have been addressing these issues in Norman for decades, but welcome our cooperation and experience. Finally, their efforts and conversations about unmet needs have inspired initiatives like Norman Caravans and Dinner for Friends, both of which address the concerns and critical challenges of unsheltered residents in exceptionally effective and caring ways. I was so impressed, as I am every year when I read nominations, but rarely have I seen an all-volunteer program do the many, many things that they are doing and work with so many other groups to make things happen. So we, as a collective group of Normanites, should be very, very proud of this group of people that are here tonight to be awarded the Norman Human Rights Commission Award for 2023, the Red Dirt Collective.
All right. That's a bad start. I'm already crying here. Okay. Well, City of Norman, thank you so much. I want to say thank you to all of you, and thank you for thinking of us, all those in the community that nominated us. Thank you so much to the Human Rights Commission. Thank you for recognizing some of the work we've been doing, and thank you to the many people who fight the never-ending fight against seemingly infinite suffering to be found here. We know that it can sometimes feel like you're pouring your entire self into a bottomless pit of need, and we want you to know how much we respect and admire your work, all of you. And we do see it, and we know that it's happening. It's especially hard, we know, when people say or imply that that's just the way the world works, or that the poverty, debt, hunger, premature death, addiction, unaccommodated disability, and oceans of unaddressed trauma are just the products of unmediated nature. It's hard because you know that's not true, and you can see with your eyes that there is plenty to go around, and that many live in luxury while others suffer in the ways that we're trying to prevent, and that they are easily preventable. It's not natural. Millions of dollars that could be used to end these problems leave Norman every day in the form of rent to out-of-Norman millionaire landlords. People who are barely surviving pay the majority of their paychecks to landlords. Renters who need that money to keep teeth, health, sanity, children, or food, and they are cruelly forced to choose which of those things they are going to part with. It is not natural for care work, care workers, it is not natural for care workers to feel like they are transfusing blood into a patient that is losing it again and again every day. Rent is one of the sites of this serious blood loss, and we must stop this kind of bleeding if we want to solve our problems once and for all. In some nations, that outflow is stopped with social housing, limited equity cooperatives and land trusts. The built city of the, the built space of the city becomes focused around the meeting of our mutual needs and around the thriving and well-being of the people that we're trying to help. Our built space has always been directed and held by a constellation of developers, landlords, businessmen, finance, VPs, consultants, and their attendant organizations. Under this direction, the life-giving properties of our city, shelter, food access, water, et cetera, are secondary. They see Norman primarily as a portfolio of earning and speculative investments, and they have shaped Norman over the last century into exactly that, and that is why we have some of the problems we have today. They hold enormous power here, they always have, and they organize endlessly to that end, lobby constantly, form and reform new political groups to support their agenda, organize political campaigns, and from their chambers, they coordinate for their collective well-being as businessmen and these other organizations I've talked about. We who do care work, we who want to end the endless tide of suffering from problems, we are made to pretend are unsolvable. We who live in this space, we who need Norman not to extract from or to speculatively invest in, but who need this space to provide our literal bodily survival, we whose bodies and minds are broken by hard lives and find ourselves disabled and then forgotten, we are not being failed by a broken system. We are the target of a system working exactly as it is meant to. Where is our chamber? Where are our organizations? Where is our political aspirations as high as theirs? Why can we not do the same as them? There are many thousands more of us than them. We just aren't organized. We must organize. We must imagine something better than what's on offer. Things will not get better until we do. Thank you so, so much. I appreciate you.
Next item is council announcements. Councilmember Ball? You want to start?
Sure. Got a few, so bear with me. It's our last meeting of the year, so holidays are coming up, so Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, everybody who celebrates it, and I'm going to try to keep them all positive up here. First one is, I know I've had quite a few people reach out about the intruder at the Airbnb. I would like to announce that the DA has finally issued a warrant for their arrest. It took two and a half weeks of a criminal walking our streets, but I know our police did an amazing job and did everything they could, so their hands are no longer tied when it comes to getting this person off the street. Speaking of our police, Thursday at 2:00, we will be having our cadet graduation at Bethel Church, where we'll be welcoming nine new recruits to our police department. So congratulations to all of those. And I know it's a little early, but January 25th, there'll be the 48th Annual Police and Fire Chili Supper. All the proceeds go to benefit the Christmas store. So I know it's a little early, but I know these guys are still taking donations and everything to give everybody a happy Christmas this year, so anything you can do to support them, and I'll be bringing this up again because it's an amazing event, and they got some great chili, if you haven't been there yet. Also, I would like to thank each and every one of you who takes your time to come out here and stay all night, listen to us, and actually talk during our miscellaneous comments, or who come up here and talk during, you know, agenda items that are important to you. It means a lot. I know everyone up here appreciates every single person, because if we want everybody to participate, we have to show our appreciation, too. So thank you all, and let's see. Riley's not here tonight, but I was able to take a, a tour of our current weather museum over here off of, I think it's Rock Creek, right? So yeah, but our current weather center or museum, it's off Rock Creek Road. It's been open for six years. This is the first time I've been able to go in there. They're open Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, but if you are a fan of meteorology, history, aviation, it is an amazing, amazing tour, and like I said, Riley, he's normally up here to speak, and he said he'd be here tonight to hold me accountable for saying this, but I don't see him, so, but he, he gave me the most in-depth, detailed, and informative tour I've ever had. So if you want to learn a little bit about weather, go up there, ask for him, and I'm sure he'll sure he'll do the same for you. Last two things. Got to go to the aviation and transportation meeting today. Well, our aviation program that's becoming here in Norman is amazing. Our high school aviation academy, they're on their second year now, and what they're doing is just is phenomenal. Moore Norman Tech Center, they also offer classes to high school and adults. So if you're looking for a career change, it's never never too late to stop learning. So I highly recommend, and if you have kids who want to, you know, pursue a career, it starts at freshman year. And right, I guess next year, they will be doing a combined program with OU, so you can get your associate's degree with your high school diploma. So more education, the better. So and the very last thing, let's see. Oh, new council announcements page. Our city manager and Tiffany, our communications director, have come up with a way for on our Friday city manager reports for you to, there'll be a link on there that you click, and it'll take you to individualized ward announcements. So if you want to know what's going on in our ward, I'll be using it. I'll be posting ward specific town halls, meetings, things like that. So look there, you no longer have to be a slave to social media or YouTube to find out what's going on in the world. And yes, I believe that is, oh, the very last thing, bus routes. Due to our central library being closed, we have two options. One of them does have a bus route that actually goes to it, and that'd be our west side library. So we're working on getting a temporary bus route established to the east side library. I know they're both working at capacity now, dealing with the overflow from this library. So bear with us, and we will make sure you have transportation to get to either library, whichever one's closest to you. And that is all I have.
Councilmember Schuler?
Great. Thank you. Yeah, so as Councilmember Ball said, this is our kind of one and only meeting this month. We will not have one later this month since it falls on the day typically would have fell on the day after Christmas. So it was such a nice occasion, I think, to recognize so many of our local citizens through the animal over animal oversight, Animal Welfare Oversight Committee, so honoring Cindy as their volunteer of the year. And again, just want to recognize Red Dirt Collective and Judge Tupper on the work that they do in our community. I think that it's really important, especially at this end of the year, to really recognize and to to look back at all the things that our citizens have been able to accomplish within the year. So thank you again for all of the work. Want to let everybody know we will be having an oversight committee meeting this Thursday at 4:00 PM, so that'll be December 14th here at City Hall. On our agenda this week is a review of our home base action plan. So you've heard us talk a lot about our home base plan and and action items that we have to address homelessness in our community, and so this would be a great overview of what that plan is and how how we're doing so far in terms of putting those plans into action. We will also get an update on our emergency shelter, which we get every month, and then also an update on interior improvements to 109 West Gray. And then I, Councilmember Peacock and I have something that we've cooked up, so I'm not going to steal his thunder, and we're gonna, I'll let him share about that, what we're what we've got going on this weekend. And then I just want to wish everybody a happy holidays, and I hope that you're all safe and you have time with family and friends.
Councilmember Montoya?
Well, good evening, Norman, Oklahoma, and Ward Three. I just have a couple of announcements. So first, the city is in the process of a very ambitious endeavor, which is called Aim Norman. So that is the City of Norman's area infrastructure and master plan. So you might have received this in the mail a couple months ago. So if you see this logo anywhere, they're doing lots of different pop up shops and things like that. So, you know, click a link and you can find some information on that, but besides that. So this initiative will shape our community for the next two decades. And the distinct elements include our land use, transportation, stormwater management, water infrastructure, wastewater, parks, and affordable housing. So Norman residents have the opportunity to provide feedback by answering monthly questions related to these items on the website at aimnorman.com. Last month's question related to housing, and this month's question is related to stormwater. So Norman residents, you can visit the pop up booths. The next pop up booth will be this Thursday, December 14th, from 7:00 AM to 9:30 AM at Yellow Dog Coffee at 22, at 222 South Porter Avenue. So please visit the aimnorman.com website and sign up on the website to stay informed. And lastly, as Ball and Schuler has said, this is our last meeting, so I hope all of you enjoy spending time with your family and friends, celebrating whatever holiday you celebrate, if you celebrate one at all, and have a very safe and happy New Year. For those of you here and watching online, thank you all for being here.
Hello, Ward Four and City of Norman. I'd also like to extend a congratulations to our human rights award winners, both Judge Tupper and our Red Dirt Collective. I'd also like to congratulate the Animal Welfare Volunteer of the Year Award, Cindy Waitner. Thank you all for your work and your dedication in your respective areas. I'm actually keeping it light. So I hope everyone enjoyed the Christmas parade, the tree lighting and art walk. I had a brilliant time. Here are some other festive events happening in Ward Four. We have Seussical at Soonor Theater. That runs December 11th through the 17th, so you have till this weekend to catch it. Holiday gift galleries that I'd like to put on your radar, there's one at Norman Firehouse Arts Center, and that runs now through December 23rd, so get your last minute gifts there if you need something special and unique. We also have a Norman Farmer's Market opportunity coming up this weekend. That's at The Well. And there is a Depot Holiday Arts Market that will be also Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00 PM at the Depot, address is 200 South Jones Avenue. Then there is a Christmas tea, if you like our Moore Lindsey House, that will be Saturday at 2:00 PM. Then you have, if you are feeling like you need to get out, Depot Comedy Night, the Polar Sketch Press, and that will be a Thursday evening, December 21st, 7:30 to 9:00 PM. And then there is a Norman Christmas Day Community Dinner, and that will be December 25th, Monday, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and it's hosted at Norman High, 911 West Main Street. Be safe out there. Use ride share or a designated driver if you're going from holiday party to holiday party, and that's it for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Ne?
No announcements this week.
Okay. Councilmember Holman? I was going to go right to Peacock.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here tonight. And to those of you watching at home, I want to extend an appreciation, like my colleagues, to all of our volunteers in Norman and various organizations, especially those recognized tonight, for working to make Norman a better place, to donating your time, your money, whatever it may be, in these efforts to try to fix things that you see that are wrong or to help people that you see that need help. So I know all of us really appreciate everything that all of our volunteers in Norman are doing, again, to make Norman a better place. I want to encourage everybody to take a look at the recent announcement of the Andrews Park Master Plan that was developed by a group of citizens and presented to the city council. It would be a long range planning goal for the park that may be done over multiple years. Maybe it's a part of a Norman Forward Two thing, but it's really just a roadmap and a goal for what the community would like to see out of our oldest and central Norman Park in the future. It's pretty exciting, so I definitely encourage you all to take a look at that. One of the biggest aspects is that it could help address and deal with the stormwater runoff issues that we have in this part of town. Most of the park or a big chunk of the park is in the floodway flood plain. Even part of City Hall complex is in the flood plain or floodway plain over here. So we all know about the flooding issues in this part of town, and some of those changes to the park in the future could help with that in this area. So definitely check that out and let us know what you think. Also, would encourage everybody to go visit Reeves Park in Ward Seven if you have an opportunity. We unveiled the new art piece, Meccan 14, in the park last week. It's very interesting. It's a robot, and it has interchangeable pieces to it. Like right now, it wears a baseball cap and holds a baseball bat, but during Medieval Fair can wear a knight's helmet and hold a sword, and it has eyes that light up, and you can see it at night pretty well. And I just want to note, it's been received very well, maybe one of the most popular, if not the most popular, art piece that we've unveiled, I think, based on the response I've seen. But I would remind everybody that have asked, why is the city spending money on something like that when we have other issues we could, we need to deal with? And I just would remind everybody that a 1% budget for public art is, was approved by Norman voters in 2015 as part of the Norman Forward Initiative. So for every project we do in Norman Forward, 1% of the budget for that project has to go towards a public art piece. The Norman Arts Council holds a process where they they put an announcement out, they let artists submit proposals for projects, and then they decide on which one meets whatever criteria, and that's what they pick. I know many have asked, why are not all of the projects Norman artists? And I think we have had Norman artists that have participated. But what struck me from the Arts Council a few years ago when they were explaining that to us was that they wouldn't want Norman artists to be restricted to just having work opportunities in Norman. So if every community around the country said, we're only gonna award these to our local artists only, then that would mean Norman residents wouldn't never have an opportunity in Oklahoma City, or Dallas, or Los Angeles, or New York. And so that really made sense to me, that we want to provide the biggest range of opportunity for artists everywhere to bring something special to our community. And like I said, we have had Norman residents and artists that have participated and have been selected before. We've also had projects where no Norman artists submitted for the proposal. So again, it is a voter approved mandate, if you will, that we have to do that. And so that funds cannot be spent on any other services or projects, has to be used for that until voters say otherwise. And so because of that, there will be a lot more public art coming in Norman, especially at the Young Family Athletic Center, when we open that in a couple months. And so looking forward to that as well. But definitely go by Reeves Park and check that out when you get a chance. And then just to follow up on Councilmember Ball, Thursday at 2:00 PM at Bethel Baptist, we have the Police Academy graduation. We have about one a year. It's a good opportunity. It's a public event. Anybody's welcome to attend, and it's a good opportunity, if you're interested, to see the faces of our new officers and get to know their names and, you know, introduce yourself and get to know them better. I think that's the goal, is that they're not just officers in a uniform walking around the city or driving around the city, that we want them to get to know who the community is that they're serving. And so one of the best ways is to attend that event, introduce yourself, and if you own a business, let them know. If you live in a certain neighborhood, let them know. But that's always a good opportunity, and I'm excited to be there for that on Thursday. And then, as Councilmember Montoya mentioned, participation in the AIM Norman process is vitally important. Our long range planning document impacts everybody in this city. If you own a piece of property, if you rent a piece of property, if you drive on any of our streets, if you walk on any of our sidewalks, then this plan impacts you. And so it being a long range planning document, we really need feedback and participation from the people that are living it every day here in our city. So if that's something you are interested in, if you've been impacted by our long ra, our planning documents before in a negative way or a positive way, definitely take the time to participate in the AIM process, and so we can get the best product possible. And then also wanted to note, many of you have seen the library maybe closed, our central library, but the Pioneer Library System has decided to waive all late fees going back forever, I guess. If you're like the Seinfeld episode where he's worried that he didn't return the book when he was a kid, and he might have, you know, $10,000 fee, don't worry, it's been waived, and you can go back and get a card and continue using library services. So take advantage of that. And then lastly, I want to mention, two weeks ago, we had our last Community Planning and Transportation Committee meeting. In that committee, we meet every month at 4:00 PM here at City Hall, and we get an update from city staff on public transit, ridership, projects, bus routes, our on demand service, and how that's how that pilot program is working. And we discuss issues like road construction projects that are ongoing and get updates from city staff about that. You can attend the meeting in person, it is open to the public, but it's also livestreamed on the City of Norman YouTube channel, and you can rewatch it anytime. And of note, in our last committee meeting, city staff gave us a presentation on how traffic control is done in the City of Norman, specifically why they have added stop signs or created new four way stops, or why they have removed stop signs, like at Jones and Acres, for example, which we've all heard a lot about. But city staff explains in detail what their methodology is for making those types of changes and why. And so if you're interested in in knowing why there's now a four way stop somewhere where there wasn't, and or now there's a two way stop where there was a four way, or why a certain intersection doesn't have a traffic signal, then I would encourage you to go back and watch that meeting, and feel free to reach out to any of us, reach out to me directly if you have any questions or comments, suggestions about public transit or road construction, and we'll be sure to bring that up in the committee and get some answers from staff about what's going on. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peacock?
Thank you. Just to dovetail on Councilmember Holman's thoughts of resident input and helping us identify what is working and what is not working. This Sunday, from 12:00 to 1:00, Councilmember Schuler and myself will be doing a walking audit of West Lindsey Street, basically from Berry to McGee, in the hopes of identifying some small scale interventions that will improve the walkability, accessibility, and pedestrian access along this corridor. We will start at the northwest corner of Lindsey and Berry, and we'll be following along with the AARP's Walk Audit Toolkit. This PDF is a great resource of what we're trying to accomplish, and it has some great strategies on how to go about doing it. So I highly suggest that everybody out there take a look at that PDF and that resource, even if you aren't planning on walking with us. The weather's looking great, and I am really excited to kind of see what all is working and what all is not working on West Lindsey Street and see what we can do to improve it. So hope you can join us. Thank you.
And I'd just like to say congratulations to Lawrence McKinney, the president and CEO of Norman Economic Development Coalition, for receiving the North America's Top 50 Economic Developer Award from Consultant Connect, an international association of site selectors. The Top 50 list is produced annually to recognize North America's most accomplished economic development professionals, and was awarded at the Annual Economics with X Convention in Atlanta, Georgia on November 30th of this year. The organization which focuses on economic developers with site consultants, compiles its list of honorees based on nominations by their peers in both economic development and site location consulting industries. Those included in the Top 50 list reflect outstanding utilization of best practices, innovative innovative initiatives, and success in building the communities that they serve. Mr. McKinney adds this Top 50 award to other professional awards he earned over his 37th year career. So congratulations to Mr. McKinney. Merry Christmas and a and a Happy New Year to you people as we go, or whatever holiday you want to do, and thank you for listening to us. Next item on the agenda is a consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged in one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that Item 5 through Item 26 be placed on the consent docket. I need a motion to place Items 5 through 26 on the consent docket.
I'll move.
Yeah, I have a motion in second. Motion on the floor is to place Items 5 through 26 on the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes. You can vote. Oh, okay.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to place Items 5 through 26 on the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent docket.
Don't move.
Second.
I have motion in second. Recognize Ms. Erin Gavigan. I don't see. Oh, yes, you are.
Good evening. I think we have some slides. Thanks. I'll use the mouse. That's not it. There we go. So thank you to Councilmember Holman, who kind of introduced this, and the process that I'm going to tell you a little bit about tonight. But we have a special treat. So tonight, we have on the consent docket to approve the contract with our artist for the next Norman Forward 1% for Art project, which is the Roundabout that is being built on Flood Avenue. So before I introduce our artist to tell you a bit about his vision, I want to go back over our selection process a little bit, and how this process works with the City of Norman. So the Norman Arts Council and the City of Norman entered into an agreement when Norman Forward was passed, that the Norman Arts Council would administer this selection process for all of the 1% for Art projects. In that agreement, we broke that up into four phases of an art selection. We've got project development, the artist's proposal and selection, fabrication and installation, and public engagement and education. I'm going to focus mostly on one and two tonight, since that's kind of where we are with this project. But this process is based on the best practices for 1% for Art programs and endorsed by the Public Art Network, which is a division of the most respected national arts organization, Americans for the Arts. So we begin with project development. Normally, this phase can take anywhere from 45 days to a year. We convene a project team, which usually consists of staff of the Norman Arts Council, the architect or designer that's on the broader Norman Forward project, and representatives of the City of Norman. For this particular project, for the Roundabout, we've actually been working on this a bit longer. Sean O'Leary and Scott Sturts, and our former public arts manager and myself have been conceiving of this project, I think, since about the beginning of COVID. And so it's been several years in process. However, by April of this year, we were ready to kick it off, and it's moved quite quickly since then. So this first piece of the project, we look at the overall public art opportunities and the budget, and determine possible locations for the public art in any given project. As we continue in this, we look at the budget for this project. So this project had a $200,000 public art budget. And we determined from that that 10% of that would go to administration, and about 5,000 of it would go to the selection process itself. That left $175,000 for the artist award. So we spent about 60 days in project development, and we established our selection panel. Our selection panel is made up of representatives of the City of Norman, who are associated with the project, a member of the Norman Arts Council Board, a member of the Public Arts Committee, arts experts, and community members as well. For this particular project, our selection panel was made up of Scott Sturts and Paul Deandra from the City of Norman, Jen Garten was our Norman Arts Council Board Representative, Tara Burnett was our Public Arts Committee Representative, Richard McCown, who I'm sure many of you know, was one of our arts experts. He's a developer and also a wonderful artist in his own right, both two-dimensional and three-dimensional, large-scale sculptural works. And Mary Deliri, who is a PhD from the University of Oklahoma in art history and an expert in Native American art. So they made up our selection panel. When we assemble the panel, we begin to, through a series of meetings, look at what we want the criteria for the artwork to be. So we establish that. The selection panel met, and they determined that for this particular project, that the most effective artwork would be an iconic, three-dimensional sculpture that could be experienced in 360 degrees visibility and centrally located in the Roundabout. Other locations along this particular project were considered as well, but it was really hard to just ignore the prominence of the Roundabout itself. The artwork was meant to create a sense of arrival into Norman, as it would be the first impression for visitors to the community, and therefore could be iconic of Norman. Or alternatively, the artwork could be an attraction and not necessarily allude to the identity of place. So we try to leave the, when we put this RFQ together for artists to respond to, we try to leave it as open as possible to artist creativity. We don't want to give them too many boundaries in their creative process. We want to leave it open just enough to know that we really wanted this to be this iconic welcoming piece into Norman, this new entrance to Norman. So as the selection process goes on, the selection panel reviews all of the artists who submitted to the RFQ. For this particular project, we had 116 artists respond to this request for qualifications. They were from all over the United States and several foreign countries. The selection panel then shortlists some finalists, and they issue to them invitations to continue on in the process, which includes a commitment to come to Norman for a mandatory site visit, where they get to walk the site with the designers and city, actually see the space, but they also spend the day just getting to know the community better. Our three finalists from this project were from New York, the Netherlands, and Oklahoma. After their presentations, once they do the site visit, they get about six to eight weeks to go back to their respective studios and put together their actual formal presentation of what this piece would look like. After their presentations, the selection panel unanimously selected Paul Bagley of Oklahoma City for this project. And so at this point, I would like to introduce Paul. We're fortunate that he is here in Oklahoma and can come talk about the project in his own words, because he will do it much better than I will.
Okay. Well, it's an honor to be here in front of the Norman Council civic leaders. I, do you have screens that you're looking at of this? Okay, so we, you're, okay, all right, that's good, because it's a little, it's a little bright in here.
No eyes in the back of our head.
Okay, all right, good. So click on that. Okay, so yeah, my name is Paul Bagley. As a matter of fact, I lived in Norman. It was one of the best times of my life. I bet a lot of people can say that. I put myself through school, and I actually got a BFA in art from the visual communications, in visual communications from OU. And I currently share a desk with Hans Bootser, the dean of the art school, I mean, the architecture school in Oklahoma City, and he and I have collaborated on trying to get public art commissions. We were shortlisted for Dallas Love Field, and it was very competitive. We didn't get it, but we did get in the door. I have been recognized throughout the country for a variety of international competitions. So I am, like you just said, I am getting in the door in other places. I got in the door in Oklahoma City recently with a public art commission. I've been getting recognized. I get shortlisted quite a bit, so that means they pay me to propose ideas. So, let's see. When I did a site analysis of Norman, of course, you know, the first thing that stood out was just the utility of the weather systems, the radar systems, and the science, the big science of it all. And that's what's, that's, I'm going to be dialing back to that idea, because it is about science, about the, the, the big science. Right here is, I went, I toured the facilities around, the radar facilities at the university, and saw the big science going on. I actually am working in a metal shop where some of the people are fabricating the mechanical parts on the right for the trucks, for the radar trucks. I'm going to keep moving here. And so, of course, this place has a global impact. I didn't realize it was, it was that. It was actually like informing shipping containers on ocean, ocean container ships, like, all the time, directing everybody with the weather. So it's pretty significant. So I ride my bike around Will Rogers Airport for exercise, and I often, because there's no cars out there, and I often run into these huge storms, and they're just mind-blowing. And when you think of Oklahoma, this is it. There's nothing else to think about, and it's awesome, right? It's beautiful. Here's another photo that I took while riding my bike. I mean, I, yeah, you know, this is epic. It's like living on Jupiter, you know? So there's a plane trying to get out of the airport. You can see it right there. You can barely see it. That's how big that storm is. And I just recently installed that, and I scheduled my photo shoot right when this thing happened, and I was explaining to the person there, it's like, I said, that is a giant popcorn machine dropping ice right in that, in that storm, and it's probably 150 miles away. So this is what drove my, my proposal. It's titled "Revolution," and you can read into a multitude of ideas when I speak of that. So I used to live in Arizona, and I worked with artist Paulo Saleri at Arcassani for three years. I worked and taught there. And a lot of influence comes, of my work, comes from living in Arizona and living in the desert. So this particular piece is up for interpretation. And when I talk about revolution, we can speak about the traffic circle. We can speak about the wheels of the cars going, going around the, the news. This is a big traffic circle, by the way. It's really great to see something big happen in Oklahoma. And then during the holidays, the reason it's white, we can color it, it'll transform at nighttime. At nighttime, it's going to be colorful, and it just turns into a whole different animal. And then, you know, St. Patrick's Day, green, you know, there's things you can do with this. And this is a quick dimension list, the materials, everything's on there, you can go over that if you need to, or you can ask me about it. Here's some mechanical drawings that's going to go to the engineers. They're going to tell me exactly how to build this. I got a pretty good idea on how to build it when I worked with the metal engineers that worked with me on this. And so this last image, just kind of, when people start talking about this piece, when they find out it's called "Revolution," they might, they might think, oh, of course, you know, the Roundabout, or Jim Gardner's, it looks like that wheel on his car. Or they'll think about the radar trucks and the revolution of those radar, or they'll think of the airport, or the new academy school out there, and the revolution of the turbines, or the propellers, turboprops. And then, of course, you know, the tornadoes revolve. So, you know, there's all these different interpretations you can pull away from this piece, and it gets all the way up into like weather satellites that are orbiting the Earth. And then, of course, I, when I speak of revolution, it's, it's interesting, because Norman is here, OU is here, is because we had a scientific revolution in the world, and that's what birthed the university. So this is also relating to the university clearly, and its, its progress and big science. And then if people want to keep talking, keep talking about what it means, it does, you know, what I did was I threw in some images, like these snowflakes at the bottom, and these shamrocks, and how people will take something in nature and turn it into artwork. And so we're just creating a piece of wonderful artwork for people to question and interpret, and hopefully have their minds blown when they drive into Norman and think, wow, this is awesome. Have you seen this work that Norman put up? And then, you know, people will be talking about it for decades to come. That's the idea. So if you have any questions, I'm here. Otherwise, I'll let everybody get on with their business.
Questions from council?
And by the way, I, I'm not from here. I'm from Boston. We moved here when we were kids because of the FAA. That's how I got here, yeah. So, but I did grow up here, and I moved away for a while, but I came back as a caregiver. Yeah, so.
Well, thank you very much, sir. I appreciate this. This is absolutely wonderful.
Thank you. Yeah. All right, great.
Erin, before you go, the story is that you're leaving us soon.
Yes.
And you're leaving a wonderful legacy, and I'd just like to say thank you.
Oh, thank you. That's very nice. I appreciate that.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Are there any comments on council?
Councilmember Grant.
Yeah, I'd just like to highlight Item 25, which is a resolution of the Council of the City of Norman. Oklahoma implementing two-hour parking limits on the north side of Gray Street between Crawford Avenue and Peters Avenue. This was brought about by Gray Owl. They had taken some hits on Yelp and other places where you get reviewed for being ticketed. This will likely help, because other coffee shops in the downtown area have two-hour parking. However, if your tags are expired past six months, this will not help with the towing, so pay your tags.
There you go. Thank you, ma'am. All right, the motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving to non-consent, Item Number 27. Ordinance Number 0232417, upon second and final reading, rezoning property located at 305 East Boyd, Center City Form-Based Code to Center City Planned Unit Development. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion in second. Recognize Councilmember Grant for a motion.
I move to postpone Items 27 and 28 until February 27th, 2024.
Okay, the, the motion is to postpone Items 27 and 28 till February 27th, 2024. Do I have a second? All right. Any questions regarding the postponement? Hold on just a second, Gunnar.
Yep.
I was just wondering what the reason of postponement was.
Go ahead and answer.
I was just going to let the applicant.
Yep, thank you, Councilmember Grant. Councilmember Ball, Gunnar Joyce, on behalf of the applicant on both this item and the next one. They're working on, with many of the council members on these, to see about what can be done on possible commercial adaptability of the ground floor units. And so this is really kind of a friendly request with the applicant on board as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Gunnar. Just a second, let me mark my thing. This is, excuse me, an opportunity for members of the public to speak against the postponement?
Either way.
Pardon?
Either way. Against or for?
Okay. Or against or for? No, sorry. Any final comments from council? Hearing none. Motion on the floor is to postpone Items 27 and 28 until February 27th, 2024. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes. Motion to postpone Items 27 and 28 until February 27th, 2024 passes unanimously.
Okay. Then I don't need to do anything until 29, right? Item Number 29. Ordinance 0232426, upon second and final reading, rezoning property located at 823 and 845 Chautauqua Avenue and 748 College Avenue from R2, Two-Family Dwelling District, R2, Two-Family Dwelling District with special use for off-street parking, and RM2, Load Density Apartment District with special use for off-street parking, to Simple Planned Unit Development District. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion in second. Is there a representative?
Thank you, Mayor Gunnar Joyce with Rieger Law Group on behalf of the applicant here, which is the Theta Sorority. I'm going to click.
I'm going to click through the slides on the last two items here. And there we go. So we've got members of the project team and, Bryce, I might have clicked too much This is a plug for our law firm if you guys need any legal advice. With me tonight, Shannon Polly.
I'll pay for it after this.
Shannon Polly is with the Theta Building Committee and she'll speak a little bit tonight on this project as well. And then in the back, the rest of the project team, we have GH2 Architects. The civil engineers are here as well with Wallace and Cooper Project Advisors. Tonight, we're looking at the existing Kappa Alpha Theta Sorority House. And this is a proposal for an expansion on what is existing, a 90-year-old house. And so they're really excited about the ability to keep this house, refurbish it, remodel and build on it instead of having to scrape and start from scratch. On this slide, I want to note that there are numerous fraternities and sororities in this area where you basically are in North Greek Row. This is zooming in a little more. We're in the corner of Chautauqua and Parsons Street. And if you can see the cursor, this is the existing house. It is currently three separate properties, all under the same ownership. So to the north up there is a parking lot that is owned by the Thetas. The middle portion of this property is where the house is. That's a second parcel. And to the east, this vacant lot is a third lot that was acquired and purchased and then subsequently rezoned in front of you guys at the very first virtual Zoom meeting in COVID. So if any of you remember that, we did that project, that rezoning, at the beginning of virtual meetings. That was rezoned at the time for a parking lot. And we had kind of two site plans as we came forward, one for a chapter house, one for a parking lot. We went with the parking lot, knowing that we wanted to have a chapter house in the future. But we had the opportunity, and we being the applicant of the Thetas, had the opportunity to buy that lot and kind of acquire ownership at the time, even though the full plan and concept for the expansion wasn't done yet. So they rezoned for parking lot, but now we're here back tonight with the full project team, with the engineers, and we're proud to show what that expansion plan looks like. Here is the zoning currently. As you can see, these property lines, there's three different properties. It's really kind of a hodgepodge when you get into this kind of core Norman. It's a lot of different kind of older zonings, R2, RM2, with special uses throughout. The sorority house is actually a legal, non-conforming use. And so in order to expand on it, we have to bring this zoning into the new 2023 requirements. So we're doing that through a SPUD. And then the 2025 does not require any amendment here. We're still high-density residential. So here is the current site plan. On the next side, it's blown up a little more that we can dive into some of the details. But here's a quick summary. It's in addition to the current house. So the gray building is the existing house. There will be some remodel work done in there. The white on the north will be the new expansion, the new build. What is inside of that is a multipurpose room, which will be that chapter house. So even back in 2020, we knew we wanted to have that. This is that chapter house realized and brought back onto the property. So they know how long they have to leave the house to hold their chapter meetings. They can do it on-site. There's additional, substantial kitchen renovation and an add-on. So we have a nice new, brand-new kitchen facilities to provide to the house. Two large new bathrooms, which will be, I know, used and celebrated. They're substantial and very nice. Large study and a nice open living space within this house, within the new build. So really, there are a few new bedrooms that'll be basically ADA compliant, but the bulk of this is not housing. It is amenities to service the sorority house. And because of that, we don't need to add new parking. So the parking that is to the east is, overall, this collection gets us to 98 parking spaces. Before this project, they currently sit at 99. So it's a loss of one spot. We're not having to add a whole bunch of new bedrooms, which would result in maxing out that east lot to achieve as many parking spaces as possible. And because of that, you see, we retained quite a bit of the corner as a usable, open green space. That is actually called on the plan Theta Park. So they're pretty excited to use that as actual usable, vibrant green space and amenity to the sorority house. Here it is zoomed in. We flipped the orientation here, so north is now to the left. But this right here, you can see, is basically an improved circulation and traffic. You had two rows of parking up here and you had angled parking and parallel parking all through the back of the building. Now the parking is an efficient row along the north and one circulation access point one way along the back of the building with no more parking spaces on the back. So much more fluid circulation through the site. And all the other parking is moved to the east with the parking lot. If you can see on the screen, a big, substantial part of this proposal that was really commended at Planning Commission is the white dots inside these trees is a commitment to protect these trees during construction and retain these trees. So it's about 18 trees throughout the site that are going to be retained. And Planning Commission, multiple commissioners commended the applicant and really applauded them for building around what exists on the site and not kind of scraping and doing all-new landscaping. Here is the existing on the left versus the new proposed on the right. And you could see it's a more efficient use of the parking. We had these angled parking up here and then parking back behind made it difficult to circulate behind the house. All of the front is mostly retained in green space. There is a new plaza space, outdoor plaza space and new entry on this portion of the existing house. And then here is the new parking lot. The existing street view is white, you know, masonry, white painted brick. That will be retained. If you can kind of see this awning here, that's the main entrance and focus there. Then also over here is the parking lot. When we go to the next slide, this is the add-on. So that's where that parking lot was. And way over here to the right of the screen is that awning. So you can kind of orient yourself. That would have been the end of the building. This is now the new added chapter house and new space. And then here is a rendering of the parking lot from the corner of College and Parsons. And you can see a low-level masonry brick wall called kind of a pony wall will be retained all the way along both street frontages. Currently today, there's a really large, I think it's a six-foot brick wall that kind of has this carve-out for this landscape area. So we are retaining both the spirit of that and the functional garden landscape space right there. Planning Commission asked for clarification and we have some proposed edits tonight that we've worked with, with Councilmember Grant, to clarify that this masonry wall will go along both College and Parsons. So I know that I've got a red-line version for you tonight of some, basically some friendly edits that we'd like to make into that. And then the last piece of that also is the allowable uses. So in discussions with Councilmember Grant, we're happy to take out some of those. Those are in the red line. We would like to keep the ability to have the general-purpose garden. I know that says farm and garden in kind of the older ones. Obviously, no intent to do farming here. But as you can see, we intend to have quite a bit of garden space. And then the accessory uses, we always like to keep that language because we never know in five, 10, 15 years, this house has been there 90 years, what type of use will be considered accessory to fraternity-sorority. We would like the kind of ability there to merge with the times. But with that, those are the kind of two amendments. With that, I hand it over to Shannon to say a few words about the project.
Hi, guys. My name is Shannon Polly. I'm representing Kappa Alpha Theta Facility Corporation Board. Gunnar did a great job of representing our project and showing what it is we plan to do with this adjacent parking lot and then the addition that we have. I wanted just to introduce myself. I'm the Building Committee Chair. I'm a Norman native. And so it's really important to me that we maintain the spirit of this neighborhood and maintain the beauty that I think is expected of the Theta House. And we've worked really, really hard to maintain that in both of these spaces. Really proud to work on this and see where it's going for the future. So look forward to seeing your support on this project so that we can move forward. So thanks, guys.
Thank you, ma'am. Recognize Councilmember Grant to make an amendment to the narrative as outlined?
I move to amend the narrative as outlined and presented by the applicant.
Is there a second? Okay. I have a motion and second. Any questions from council regarding the amendments? This question's not about the amendment? Okay. How about wait two? This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the amendment. Are there any public speakers? Hearing none? All right. Any final comments from council? Not about the amendment?
This is the amendment, Stephen.
Okay. Let's do the amendment and then I'll get to you. Councilmembers, the amendment on the floor, it's got a motion and second. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the PUD narrative will be amended as outlined and presented by the applicant.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, councilmember, would you like to ask some questions?
So when this came up before, a couple of years ago, this was in Ward 7. And I did vote for it. The parking lot part, I mean, nothing has changed about that from what we approved before?
It has changed. There's been two or three variations. Mainly, prior was all angled parking. And really, the design of that lot was so conceptual that they were kind of just proposing a parking lot, knowing they wanted to do it in the future, but they didn't know how many spots they'd actually need because they hadn't laid out the expansion yet. So now we're dealing with a little more real-world numbers. We're still losing a spot. We have retained, obviously, the shape. We went back and forth. There was actually an amendment that night to make access off of Parsons two-way throughout the whole site. We did retain that as well. So I'd say the spirit is retained, but there are some changes. It's actually more tree preservation this time around. I know we had kind of called out only two or three trees last time. And this time, there's a substantial commitment to keep much more.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I recall, the park part of it and then preserving trees and then having the masonry wall, which is there, but it's going to be replaced.
Right.
With a new one. Okay. So that's really, I just wanted, what I wanted to clarify on the record was what has been changed from what we approved a few years ago. Not counting the new addition, that wasn't part of that. But, yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Grant?
I just wanted clarification on the lighting because I know that's something people care about. The parking lot lighting will stay in the parking lot and not be beaming into people's homes and properties, correct?
Absolutely. The long answer, I will not give all of it, is the commercial outdoor lighting standards. We have adopted into those. Those do apply. I said that briefly at Planning Commission and I saw some eyes kind of go, "Oh, you're bringing commercial lights here." That's not what the commercial lighting ordinance does. It actually says that you can't encroach when you're sort of a commercial use onto residential. So we are not a commercial use. We're a multifamily here, kind of multifamily light with the sorority. But we cannot encroach. And there's .02-foot candles. Libby, am I right? Because I know you did the research on that. .02-foot candles is the measurements that you are allowed to, and that is very minute. If you go anything above that, you're in violation of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you. First, I just want to commend you on your effort to keep all the trees on the site. Really appreciate that. And to that point, I guess, if we were to lose any of these trees during construction, is there a commitment from the applicant to replace them with a tree of similar species and size?
So that language is not in the SPUD. I think that you could get that kind of commitment from Theta being who they are. They're, you know, a great owner of property. They have great landscaping throughout. The hard part is some of these trees, and I want to touch on a little difference from what we usually see, is they are so old that it would be difficult to replace with the size. I think you definitely would see them come in with different landscaping, but it would be something that works with the site and is an amenity. Because I know they have plans to use that and keep it beautiful. We have not done before construction protection language. And that's what's in there, excuse me, this time. It says that these trees are protected during construction. Usually, we say, "To the extent feasible, we won't take out any trees." And when we do, we'll kind of do a two-for-one. In my opinion, this language is actually more restrictive because we're saying, "We're going to make sure around our construction, we're going to protect the roots." Usually, when you get into protection of trees at construction, that you kind of get into like the drip line of the outside, you know more than I do, so I just stopped talking. But it's a very, it's a very protective way that they've worded it.
Well, you hit the nail on that. It is, it's a pretty cumbersome method. So I appreciate your commitment to be able to do that. So thank you.
That's all? Okay. I was hearing Bethel when it didn't make any sense. Motion on the floor is to amend the narrative as outlined and presented by the applicant. We haven't noted in the... We're back on the main. We haven't gotten the, we haven't done the amendment?
Yeah, we voted on it.
Okay. Shows you what I know. We've gotten down. Final comments from council? Motion on the floor is to adopt?
Number 12.
12. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak. You guys have got me mixed up.
Sorry. Skip the long steps, sir.
Members of the public, speak on this item. Madam Clark, has anybody signed up to speak on this?
Yes, sir, we have.
Are we on? Here we go. Steve Ellis, Ward 4. As you know, I've been trying to address some of the issues involving SPUDs and PUDs in Norman. And so this is my next opportunity to do this, since this is a SPUD development. I want to refer back to Caleb's acceptance speech for the Red Dirt Collective Award before. People in Norman, just sort of regular people, are sort of struggling to get involved in some of the kinds of issues that are involved in Norman's development. And one of the ways for us to do that is to make sure that we're sort of doing our due diligence on these kinds of special deals that the city is supposed to be making. By law, under a SPUD, the city is supposed to be making a deal to maximize the unique physical features of a particular site and produce unique, creative, progressive or quality land developments. So we're supposed to be looking for a superior build environment and the application of design ingenuity. And from the documents made available, which I think was all of them, I think the red-line version was the version of the SPUD that I looked at, it really looks like the proposed addition is something that would fit on the current lot of the standing building. So this is basically a parking lot reorganization SPUD proposal. And it seems like they're tearing up less than they had originally planned to in terms of trees and things like that, but probably not less than would happen if you didn't do anything tonight whatsoever. So what I really want to ask is sort of what's the rationale for granting the SPUD in the sort of terms of the SPUD ordinance itself? What is special about this? As I think I've mentioned before, the sort of standard practice of just giving people what they want when they ask for it without doing the due diligence to try and see how it meets the environment really sets you to get sued for being arbitrary and capricious. If you let anything go just because it gets asked for, then you're going to have a hard time saying no when you would prefer not to say no because it does look like it's arbitrary and capricious. So hopefully, we'll have a little bit of discussion just about, you know, ask the applicant, "How does this meet the SPUD requirement? What's special about this?" Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Lee Hall. I live in Ward 4. And...
And has already been presented to you, this has been a project in the making for a number of years now, with the first step being when council action was taken in 2020 with the approval of special use for a parking lot, when a lot of these issues were discussed at that time. Before you tonight is the next stage in a comprehensive plan for a much needed addition, reimagining the current parking options as parking places will be lost due to the addition. As a neighbor and also with a 52-year affiliation with Kappa Alpha Theta, including three years of living in this 90-year-old house, I wanted to come tonight, it felt important to me, to acknowledge the collaborative efforts of the applicant represented tonight by Shannon Polly, the Building Committee Chair, the team of professionals working with an all-volunteer group of Theta alums, the Planning Department staff, and ultimately, the members, all of you, the members of the City Council. When applicants and council members can work together in good faith to meet the needs of the applicant while also keeping the impact on neighborhoods in the community in sharp focus, the end result is always, always a better project. Following this project since I have, since 2020, and my interest in this house as a historic property, I respect the opinion of Professor Ellis, but there also has been significant changes made to the original proposal in this project. And it has been because of the collaborative efforts on the part of the applicant and the council. So I thank you for your efforts and your patience to get to a result and continue amending the document that you're about to approve because it is going to result in a better project. So thank you for that.
Evan Dunn?
No comment.
Okay. Carlinda Gravel?
Carlinda Gravel, Ward four, Mayor, Council. I just want to take this opportunity to thank you for upholding what you have set out to do, which is to allow citizens to come and have their voices heard when there is a rezoning or something that is going to take place on a property. When we follow the process of allowing those in a 350-foot radius to bring their signatures of protest or anybody outside of that 350 radius. And so I appreciate that you consider those, that you look at those, and you give the citizens of this community a voice when something new is going to take place on a property. Thank you.
Cheryl Anne Dawson, Denso, I'm sorry.
Cheryl Anne Denso, Wards four and six. I want to thank the applicant and anybody who worked on this project for considering the green spaces. Too many times, the trees are knocked down just for parking lots to add another, add another, you know, parking space. So it's refreshing to see that you're trying to maintain as much lawn as possible. I've driven by this house a million times and traveling through Norman. And to be able to not, not knock down a historic property and to expand on it and make it better and more usable for today's students is commendable. So thank you.
Thank you ma'am. All right. Any final comments from council? Hearing none. Motion on the floors to adopt the ordinance as amended on second reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to amend the ordinance on second reading as amended, I'm sorry, to adopt the ordinance on second reading as amended passes unanimously.
Thank you ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance as amended on final reading.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Motion on the floors to adopt the ordinance as amended on final reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance on final reading as amended passes unanimously.
Thank you ma'am. I recognize Councilmember Peacock for an abstention.
Thank you. Regarding items number 30 and 31 pursuant to Section 2-103D of the city's code, I intend to recuse from the discussion and the vote on these items because I have a perceived conflict on item number 30 and an actual conflict on item number 31 because I have worked professionally on that project. But I intend to make the presentation for item number 31 on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, sir. I need a motion to allow Councilmember Peacock to abstain from items 30 and 31.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Motion on the floors to allow Councilmember Peacock to abstain from items 30 and 31. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to allow Councilmember Peacock to abstain from items 30 and 31 passes unanimously with Councilmember Peacock abstaining.
Thank you ma'am. Item number 30. Ordinance 0232430. Upon second and final reading, rezoning property located at 321 Comanche Street from Center City Form Base Code to Center City Planned Unit Development. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Is there a representative from the applicant?
Mayor, Council, my name is Jake Aldridge. Address is 4405 Cannon Drive, Norman, Oklahoma. I also have a office at 324 West Main Street, Norman, Oklahoma, which is immediately to the north of this property. I think it's incredibly important, before we get started, to identify that the nature of this request is on behalf of the Tom S. and Mary Kate Aldridge Charitable and Educational Trust, which actually has its home office at 324 West Main, along with a law firm. The Tom S. Aldridge and Tom S. and Mary Kate Aldridge Charitable and Educational Trust came into existence in 1996. That was started by my great-grandfather, run by my grandfather. And over the last 25-plus years, we've donated more than $4.5 million to nonprofit charities. When COVID hit, as it hit everybody, we identified that it was a good idea to diversify what we were doing with the portfolio of the foundation so that we could continue our giving. One of the things that they decided to do, and my grandfather's last wish, was a brick and mortar building for the foundation. They purchased 324 West Main. One of the benefits of where I was at in my life is that I was able to partner with the foundation to renovate the building so that I could have my law office along with the foundation office where my father, who is the chairman, and my late grandfather was the chairman at that time. It was always the plan when we purchased 324 West Main and the two lots that are immediately behind it, which are 321 Comanche, to have a place for our family, the board of the Tom S. and Mary, Tom S. and Mary Kate Aldridge Charitable and Educational Trust, to come our family meetings. How far? Okay, okay, sorry. Oh, here I am. No, still.
You need to go the other way.
Okay. Sorry about that.
There you go, that's you.
This is me. We are seeking to have this rezoned. We are seeking to have it rezoned from a single-family dwelling with a an accessory dwelling to allow us to have a dual-unit duplex. We're asking to have that done because the adjacent properties are doing the same. Asking to do that for two reasons. One is, the name of my law firm is Aldridge Teasdale. My partner will live in one and the other will be for my family. The thought process has always been to have a place for my family to come when the time is necessary for us to have our annual meetings. As you kind of look through the photographs, what you see here is, looking from Comanche to the north, the interesting thing about this photograph is the only trees that are on the lots where we will be developing are the small tree on the right side of the photograph, or left side of the photograph, and the tree in the middle. The other taller maple trees or pecan trees, those belong to the adjacent property. House immediately across the street. That is the back of the building where we currently have our offices. Used to be Common Grounds, which was owned by the First Baptist Church of Norman, which we purchased in 2020. The interesting thing about this property is it falls in an area of Norman where you actually have a dedicated alley. And the alley actually works so that you have the ingress egress for the offices and buildings on everything on Main Street, but also the ingress egress for the properties that are on Comanche. The development plan that we have in place is to save all of the green space on Comanche. You will have no driveway, you will have nothing but the most limited sidewalks coming up too. Because again, we want to save the green space, we want to save the trees. Because of the nature that we have with this alley, you don't really have a traditional backyard environment. So all of the green space will be on Comanche. And the dedicated ingress egress for the property will be from the alley, which is what its intent was. Again, alley. Incredibly interesting point as we kind of look at the surrounding properties. To the immediate west of this property is, this is looking south. The three homes that are there to the west are all rental properties. Long-term tenant on the corner of Comanche and University. The other two properties have been short-term tenants over the time that I have been there. I have attempted to go door-to-door to all of my neighbors in that area to make sure that I could talk to them about the development plan that we had in place, to explain to them that we were trying to keep consistent with the area. To explain to them, my partner went with me, trying to explain that the intent was to have home there and not some things that I had heard from some of the City Council members at some point in time about a mini dorm. That will not be something that is happening here. You have my pledge, you have my promise, as a Norman resident, as a business owner, and as the attorney for the Tom S. and Mary Kate Aldridge Charitable and Educational Trust, that will not happen here. So as you look at the kind of the site plan that we have, we have done everything that we can possibly do to comply with the green space requirements and have in fact changed the plan multiple times with the assistance of the city to ensure that we have the 35% green space requirement, to ensure that we are complying in all ways that we possibly can. The interesting thing about this area is this is plotted at the inception of our community. These lots are 25 feet wide and you cannot build individually. So you have to build together. And it was an interesting conversation. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, and thank you very much for all of your time and efforts to help me understand what it meant. Because to me, I own two lots. No, you don't own two lots, you own, what you can build is one lot. Well, why can't we do this? I don't understand. And it was really an interesting process and I really, I truly thank you for your time. Both of you, both council members and the city as well. Here is the initial front kind of facade thought process, the exterior sides. Obviously, the back is going to be facing an alley. It will have dedicated driveways there. The area already is slate stone, crushed stone, because it was a parking lot that was used by the First Baptist Church for the last 40 years. We are not changing the green space in any way, shape, or form. In fact, I hope to beautify that space by owning that space and creating something that would be beneficial from a Comanche side perspective to create something that looks a little bit different than the blank four lots that are just there and undeveloped. Floor plans, as you can see, this is not a mini dorm. It is two single-family dwellings that happen to be connected and they are connected for the sole reason that the only way to make this work is to put them together. If I hadn't, if we had enough and we could separate them, we would do it. But because of the nature and the extent of the land use that we have, we have to keep them connected. I think it's incredibly important that we look at the immediately adjacent properties. So this is, this property is owned by Waters Electric. And I know that the photograph is hard to see, but there on the left side, I think as you look at it, there is a doorway. And the reason that doorway is important is because that is not the front doorway, that is the doorway to an additional unit. There are already duplexes on this street. So when I ask for the rezoning to allow me to do this, it is not me that is coming first. This property is first. This property is immediately adjacent and it is second. And as you see on that photograph, there is what looks like a single-family unit. When you walk up the front door, the interesting thing is, is that there is a metal staircase down the side. That is to a accessory unit. It is not a separate ADU. It is a unit that is a part of that property and that is immediately adjacent to where I will build. Finally, this is what we intend as far as the exterior is concerned. Our sincere hope, and in conversations with City Council members, Grant Holman was, to stay within the confines of what that area looked like. In conversations with Councilman Holman, he said, you know, the principal thought process about what we were doing is we left downtown Norman Main Street and we moved from tight commercial to residential. The step in between that is missing in our community is the ability to have accessible housing for people that are not in homes alone. And the idea and the reason that I think we have kind of come to this thought process through the communications with council members and with the city was that this meets that middle ground. We want to keep the nature and the extent of the facade on the outside. We want it to look the way that the community looked like and was built at that point in time. But we want to progress as well and we want to add additional options as far as housing is concerned. So with that, I am open to any questions or I'm here if you need anything from me.
Thank you. First, I would just note that I'm not related to Jay Holman design and drafting, although I'm very interested in that type of thing. But so, in our discussions, if you were to develop this property under the existing Center City Form Base Code, it would require your building to be closer to the street, right?
That's correct.
And therefore, you would have to remove the trees that are existing in the front, is that right?
Most likely. Councilmember, that is, that is 100% correct. And again, it goes back to the time spent kind of ferreting through this process and trying to determine what the best use of this for the purposes of identifying what the provisions within the code were and how can we make it so that it works, so that we're not encroaching upon additional green space. The interesting thing about the single-family dwelling with an ADU behind it is that on a property of this size, you have to move forward in order to have the ADU behind. And when you do that, all you do is lose green space. And although that is functionally an option in other areas with these very with these very small lot sizes, it's incredibly difficult to make that work. One of the interesting things that I had somebody tell me at one point in time was, well, you could just build a single-family dwelling unit. It actually came up in planning. You could build a single-family dwelling unit. You could have the ADU, and you could do whatever you wanted. And I said, that's not what we're here to do. We're here to abide by the rules. We're here to be here to ensure that we create, if we are creating precedent, that helps to further the community and to provide other options. The single most important thing, I think, before I leave, and I'm sorry to overstep, is that this is not an outside entity. This is not Dallas money. This is a nonprofit charitable organization that whatever money is made here, whatever it does for the portfolio of the foundation, that money goes into scholarships and nonprofits. That is who we are. And so I am incredibly blessed to be able to speak on their behalf. But I can promise you that that is how this foundation works, and it is not self-serving. So if there's anything else I can answer.
So just to clarify, because we... You could, without having to be here tonight, you could develop under the existing zoning. It'd be different, but you could. But it would require your building to be put in a spot that would forcibly remove the trees out front. By coming this, by doing this route, you're requesting a PUD. And if we grant it, in exchange, one of the things we get is the trees that are in the front won't have to be removed because your building will be set further back.
And the addition of extra trees.
And extra trees, right. So that's a trade-off, though. I just wanted to note that if we grant it, we would be getting something like that in exchange where our current zoning would require you to remove the trees and build the building where those trees are at currently. So just wanted to clarify that. And right now, that's the only... I think Councilmember Grant has some questions and stuff, so I'll pass it along for now. Thanks.
Yes, thank you for preserving the trees and green space. With a project like this, do you have what the stormwater impact will be?
So we have gone through and ensured through work with the city that we have hired engineers to ensure that we are in compliance. I can't speak directly to that. I have my builder here, if you would like to speak to him, and I'm sure he can answer any questions that are there.
I'm happy to. Joey Wischnow, Quinstone Construction. Yes, we have. We hired Wallace Engineering. They did the civil engineering for this, and we have, the drainage is actually doing exactly what it does now. Partially drains the alley, partially drains to the street. We have gutters on all four sides, so we did do a drainage plan with Wallace Engineering.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious with the keeping the green space and adding trees, if it was better or same. It sounds like same.
It's actually same, because, sorry, this is a flat site, so it's really not doing much different. And with us controlling what's coming off the roof line, it's pretty much the same.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor.
Stephen Ellis.
Steve Ellis, Ward Four. More reflections a little bit on the Center City Form-Based Code and the PUD proposal for this. I think it's interesting. It seems like what the council is saying is that this area is mis-zoned the way it is right now. I mean, part of the thing that we were looking for with the Center City Form-Based Code was a sort of uniform look, and the build-to line was definitely part of that. But of course, in areas like this, where the build-to line is closer to the street than the current houses are, you're going to be losing yard, especially if people want to put two things together. So I thought it was interesting that the project fits within the Form-Based Code. But the objection is basically to the Form-Based Codes operating the way it does in this particular kind of instance. So I was just wondering, how does that fit with the CCPUD requirement that the general trend of the PUD should be consistent with the Form-Based Code? This looks like it needs to be rezoned to a different part of the Form-Based Code, rather than just having it as a sort of roll-your-own-zoning kind of thing. Because we're going to get a real snaggletooth appearance if the next few people build up to the build line and that sort of thing. So I think we need to rethink the whole issue of this neighborhood, rather than doing this lot by lot. Thanks.
Evan Dunn. Carolina Gravel.
Carolina Gravel, Ward Four, Mayor, Council. I really appreciate that you value green space as much as I do. The fact that you're always talking about preserving green space in Norman is pretty exceptional. When you look at other surrounding cities, they don't seem to value the green space quite as much as we do. You have a big decision on your hands when you're considering rezoning. I would be concerned. I would wonder if there were any protests in the neighborhood to this and what reasons they might have done so. So that's good to know. So, you know, I can appreciate that there are a lot of changes taking place in our city and that you are carefully considering each one independently. And I care about our city as much as you do. We care about it the same, so I appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Cheryl Lynn Dinsel.
I will say, at Planning Commission, it was pointed out, instead of doing CCPUDs, if we know a rule change is coming, to do a rule change. I'm still supportive of the CCPUD because I feel that it gives a light touch to what we've identified as a missing middle in this area. And the corner where there's a parking lot is actually in the orange. And if you don't know what that means, it means urban general, which means commercial on the bottom, and residential on the top. This area we identified is potentially moving into the periwinkle, which means more of a triplex. We are aware that there is a potential duplex, and we're not even opposed to that because again, this would not be introducing a whole bunch of triplexes all at once, but kind of put in a light touch so that when redevelopment comes and it is periwinkle, that will already be a precedent, and they can move forward with it. Thank you.
Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes by a vote of six to one. Voting against, Councilmember Nash and Councilmember Peacock abstaining.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and second on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes by a vote of six to one, with Councilmember Nash voting no, and Councilmember Peacock...
Three times thanks. To adopt or reject the ordinance on second, on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Thank you. Is there a representative for the applicant to make the presentation?
Mr. Peacock has an architect going to present for us.
This never feels normal. Good evening, councilmembers. Matt Peacock here with Peacock Design, here representing my client, Doyle's Electric. Doyle's is a longtime downtown Norman business, started in 1964, and is looking to grow their operations and invest in the next 60 years of downtown Norman. So here, here shows the existing zoning on the track. This here is the existing street view, where you can see their existing one-story building on the right side of the screen and the vacant lot in the middle. And that vacant lot is actually where we are proposing our new building tonight. I want to point out that Doyle's has historically been able to park their vehicles in this vacant lot, basically to have secure area for their operations. And so the reason that we're here tonight is this project is located in the CCFBC, and we are asking for review variances from that zoning overlay. You can see on the proposed site plan that we are demolishing the front half of the existing building and then constructing a new two-story building on the vacant lot. The existing building shown in orange, the new building shown in green on that slide. The portion of the site that was demoed will then function as their secure parking, essentially flipping the functions of the site with each other. Both lots are part of one parcel, and which is, that's why we see this as an appropriate solution. The variances that we are seeking are the removal of the required build line, because actually, on this stretch of Comanche, that RBL is 11 foot behind the property line, whereas you can see in the slide, the existing buildings are all built up at the property line, so a zero-foot RBL. That's what we're trying to replicate here. The other variants we're seeking are elimination of parking setback line and the, so that the existing one-story building can remain. Here's a closer look at the site plan. You can see along the front area of the turquoise there, the new parking. It shows a gate and continuous street wall across the front there. You also see the two-story plan with showroom, office, conference, and storage. All elements of the new building will conform to Center City Form-Based Code requirements, including the clear fore height, fenestration requirements, material choices, and the building dimensions. And here is what that looks like from the updated street view. So I just want to close real quick with a few things. The open space in front of the existing building will double as a placemaking opportunity when paired with the occupied roof deck that you see there on the screen on the right side. Excuse me. Any future building on that lot will have to conform to Center City standards. The reason we're asking for variances is so that one-story portion of the existing building can remain until the site is ready to be developed fully on both parcels. Flipping the buildings like this will open up a better redevelopment opportunity to the east as the existing building can be paired with the existing parking lot adjacent to this project. You can see there on the left side of the screen, there is an existing parking lot owned by the church across the street. Basically freeing up the lot directly adjacent to that parking lot makes the entire thing more of a desirable package in the future for redevelopment. And both of these are examples of incremental development and how we can move the ball towards a desired outcome, even if it is phased in over time. Achieving the vision of Center City will take time, and this is a step in that direction. So happy to answer any questions that you might have. We have the owner and the developer here with me tonight, and I appreciate your consideration of this project.
You know, I'm always going to ask about stormwater.
Please.
So how does this drain?
So it actually drains to the alley currently, just like all the historic buildings, and that is piped into a storm sewer system.
Okay, not increasing impervious surface on this, or?
I would say yes and no. The existing lot that we are filling is actually, it's paved, but you could argue that it's paved. I mean, it's very old and very cracked and decrepit. So there is impervious surface on that site. We'll be adding a building to that, so it goes from being cracked concrete to a building. You know, it's six and one and a half dozen the other.
Okay, thank you.
The, yeah, from what I can tell, too, it seems to be completely covered in concrete currently. The fence here on the side that opens inward?
Yes, sir.
Not out onto the sidewalk, right?
Yes.
Okay. And it was really the only question I had along with stormwater, but answered that, so that's all I have. Thanks.
Stephen Ellis. Evan?
No comment.
Carolina Gravel? And Cheryl Lynn Dinsel.
Yeah, just briefly, I wanted to comment that I'm just really excited about this project. I mean, this building, this is exactly the type of architecture construction I like to see. It looks like a building that could have been there for 100 years potentially, you know? I'm always wondering, why is it so hard to just build a square now? We got to do all these things and make it so difficult to build something. I'm like, can we just build a two-story rectangle with... And so the masonry, the brick, I mean, I think this, yeah, again, this is exactly what I want to see. It's like an open alleyway, we're building a two-story building to help a existing, longtime locally-owned business stay in Norman and, you know, flourish for another 60 years plus. So I'm just excited about this and hope we see more. And I don't know if West Comanche Street has ever seen so much attention in one council agenda before. Kind of a forgotten little street. Anyway, I appreciate you bringing this project forward.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
The photo of the existing building? This looks terrible, and I appreciate that the applicant is finally fixing it.
I will say thank you for them. We'll go back to this image. How about that?
All votes have been cast. To adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes by a vote of seven to zero, with Councilmember Peacock abstaining.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
A motion and second. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast.
All votes have been cast. To adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes by a vote of seven to oh, with Councilmember Peacock abstaining.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Get to work. Next, this is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. This is miscellaneous comments. Due to Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks must be directed to the council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for miscellaneous comments?
Yes, sir. We'll start with...
We'll start with Stephen Ellis.
Steve Ellis, Ward Four. I just wanted to add my voice to that of the Human Rights Commission in congratulating Judge Tupper, but in particular, the award for the Red Dirt Collective. They're the best thing going in Norman right now. I think it's super important that we recognize that sort of, you know, grassroots mutual assistance is the sort of wave of the future. And I hope that city council will, you know, see that as an important thing and think of themselves in many ways as, as something that can assist that kind of mutual development and mutual taking care of one another, rather than sort of displacing it in a certain kind of way. The sort of bottom-up, grassroots character of this is really, really important, and it's something I think we all need to pay attention to. It's actually how we get stuff done. So congratulations to the Red Dirt Collective. They're fantastic. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Evan Dunn.
Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor, staff, audience. You know, every time I come here, I expect to see something different. I expect some of what it is that I've been putting forth. I'm expecting somebody to say, that's what we need... I'm, I'm expecting somebody to, to say, that's what we need to hear. And you know what? I'm so inspired because it just makes so much sense. These ideas about posture, these ideas about food foresting. Red Dirt Collective, they get it. There's still bare soil out there in front of these chambers. How? How are we wasting our competitive advantage as a nation? China, China is using all of their resources. They're in total war mode, as they have been for 40 years. These things that have come forth today, God, so superficial, so wasteful. For us to delay in implementing policies that incentivize food foresting and maximizing every bit of soil possible? It's a crime, arguably, against future generations. There's only a finite amount of oil on this planet. How are we conserving it for them? We're not only denying them those resources, we're denying ourselves the transcendent experience of participating in the solution. It might just be a little bit, but you, 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 everybody who exists has the power and the capacity to be a part of solving the problem. We're all familiar with COP28. We're all familiar with what's happening around the world. I have not heard a single individual, a single politician articulate any idea about solving this problem by virtue of a grassroots food foresting approach. Nothing. So you dismiss these ideas, you dismiss me at our peril. We're all in danger, but... You see these crews running around. They have huge machines, all this fuel. For what? For superficial needs. It's an insult.
Cynthia Rogers.
Rogers, Ward 4. It's always difficult to follow Evan. But I appreciate you, and he's not wrong. I just wanted to echo the human rights awards and commend both Judge Tupper and the Red Dirt Collective for what they're doing and encourage, like, more of us to follow their lead. Thank you.
Chelsea Gravel.
Honorable Mayor, honorable council members, thank you once again for hearing what I have to offer. We share a hope for a better community and a desire for a willingness to apply the time and effort it takes for the community to be better. The passion we share for our community can be seen everywhere we look in Norman. I'd also like to thank the community members who are working together to bring awareness and share personal experiences and stories with the community of Norman. Thank you. I'm excited to offer support and discuss solutions with my community. We share photos and concerns about our homeless crisis in Norman. This is a place where we can talk. We're working to bring awareness of the homeless crisis the whole United States is facing as it invades Norman. We're seeking effective solutions through discussion and data and research in the ineffective solutions that are being used now across the U.S. and around the world. How will we know where to change if we just keep doing the same the rest of the country is doing? They are implementing choices that are not helping our communities. If we continue to make the same choices, we can't be surprised by the same outcomes. What we're doing is not compassionate. We have on our page on Facebook, on Norman Neighbors 1889, we have 563 members. This is not limited to Norman families. This is also the families of our OU students. These are people in other countries looking for answers on ways to save their communities as we are attacked from within, as drugs take our communities down. Fentanyl, fentanyl is $1 a pill. How much of that does it take to overdose on? I don't know. I don't want to find out. But if we come in contact with it, if we touch it, we're all capable of overdosing. I don't want to experience an overdose. I don't do drugs. I don't want to have to carry Narcan on me so I can save a 10-year-old student who has come in contact because their friend is selling drugs. But instead, we're being attacked from within. We are allowing people in our community to do wrong things. I am not against the people who are needing the help, but the criminals that I am against are not being seen, and everyone's just brushing it off as nothing, depending on what crime. So if this is, if we are a state or a city that doesn't file, and our misdemeanors don't follow us out of our community, and our homeless can't pay for their night in jail, what's the point? Why don't we all be homeless and commit crimes? Because there's nobody to hold us accountable. Our city allows it. Thank you.
Carlena.
Carlena Gravel, Ward 4. Mayor, Council, thank you for your time this evening. I'd like to share an incident that occurred since the last time we met. On December 4th, on Norman Neighbors 1889, there were several posts of a video and photo footage of a gentleman who was destroying a mailbox. So two or three people posted that. I actually recognized this man because I'd had an encounter with him the day before. I was walking down Main Street. He had just had an encounter with two police officers. Their lights were on down Main Street. He crossed in front of me. He was very verbally angry at what had just occurred with the officers. I stepped back to stay out of his way so he could move on and do whatever it was he needed to do. So when these posts were posted, a Good Samaritan citizen posted that he works at the shelter, and he recognized this man, and he shared his name as Jeff Wilson, and that he had been stealing from people at the shelter, and our vulnerable homeless were being victimized by this man as well. So that proceeded to be able to, individuals that had had the experience with the mailboxes to contact the police, let them know the individual had been in an encounter with police officers the day before, have the name of the individual, and move forward with the gentleman who actually had some criminal record. However, the well-meaning Good Samaritan got fired by April Dossier the next day for sharing this on Facebook with our community. Well-meaning, worried about people being victimized in our community, worried about the homeless being victimized in the shelter, and he lost his job. He didn't sign any type of disclosure not to reveal this. And I'm so glad that he came forward because this gentleman was victimizing people in our community and shouldn't be allowed to do that. Thank you.
Cheryl Ann Dinsel, and I've got property, Words 4 and 6. This has been an interesting council meeting. We've had a plethora of different points of views, and I would just like to say that it's representative of how diverse our community is. And even the presentations on the different properties and what people's visions for those properties are, were very different and diverse. And I have to admit, I appreciate that the council looks at individual pieces of property, doesn't just cookie-cutter the properties. And I have to implore you to continue to do that as Norman inevitably will probably expand farther and farther out, much to the chagrin of our precious water. Thank you.